Looks like we are all here. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our August 12th, 2025, Phoenixville Borough Council monthly meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our council meeting both in person and virtually, and we're glad that you've decided to join us here for this meeting. During the public participation and public hearing, portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually. A member of our staff will unmute your microphone, announce your name, and then you'll be able to make comment to all of council and the public. After we've moved through everybody who's joining us via Zoom, we'll move to everybody. I'm sorry, we'll start with everybody in the room and then move to those joining us via Zoom. We will have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning, one towards the end, and public participation is limited to three minutes per and once per a public participation session. We just want to keep everything moving tonight. So with that, we will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silence. That will start with real comments. Mr. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Carmenito.
Present.
Mr. Dugan. Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Strunfeld. Mr. Weiss.
Present.
DeWol.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant Chief Solicitors here. You have a form. Thank you very much. With that, that opens our first round of public comment. So any member wishing to make comment, we do have a podium or a microphone setup, or members joining us via Zoom wishing to raise their hands virtually. Absolutely.
How's it going, guys? My name is Mark Tippie. I live at 308 Bridge Street right there. I was here a week ago for the hard meeting. Would this be the time to discuss that? Think you were there?
Yeah, but as soon as we go and talk about it, I'll probably bring you up.
Okay, okay. That wasn't shit.
Thank you. Looks like we have one hand on Zoom.
David, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you. David Lutzker, 243 Morgan Street. I'm just looking forward to hearing some details during this meeting about the agenda item, about the agreement with Tol Mid-Atlantic. I think it's an agreement. I don't recall exactly, but looking forward to hearing more details about what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With just the agenda, okay. With that, we'll close the first round of public participation. We do have another round towards the end of the agenda. But considering that more than half the room is here for the next section, we'll move on to section. Before we move on to section four, sorry, the presentations, we just one announcement prior to tonight's meeting. We held an executive session to discuss the following: a matter of litigation related to tax assessment appeal related to Phoenixville Hospital property, a matter of attorney-client privileged discussion related to site access agreement for the Borough wastewater treatment plant property, a matter of attorney-client privileged discussion related to the hydroelectric dam application made to FERC, and a matter of attorney-client privilege discussion related to zoning ordinance amendments and legal reprobations thereof, and finally, a matter of personnel related to police department promotions and hiring. So those items were discussed in executive session immediately prior to tonight's meeting. Now, with that, we will move to section four, presentations. I'll hand it over to Mayor Urscheler.
Thank you all so much. I apologize, just clarifying something. Thank you all so much for being here this evening. Thank you for those of you who are joining us virtually via Zoom. I first want to thank all of you for being here today, but especially I would like, if we have a moment, please to welcome all of our incredible police officers who have joined us today. And certainly, as a borough, we are so excited whenever we can bring new people into the fold, and we are very fortunate and grateful here in our community to have an extraordinary group of heroes who serve us every single day in our Phoenixville Police Department. And so certainly to all of our police officers who are here with us today, thank you. Thank you for our service, for your service to our community and to all of our extraordinary residents. And thank you to all of you for your support of our extraordinary police department and its officers. I also want to take a very special moment to acknowledge our police chaplain, Pastor Dan McDowell, who is with us today. And we do have a slight change on the agenda. We would be swearing in Patrol Officer Mike Rapaski tonight, but he did welcome a beautiful baby girl yesterday, Caroline Grace, and so he will be unable to join us. So he will be coming next month to be sworn in. But with that, I will turn it over to our Chief of Police. I certainly want to take a moment also to acknowledge our Chief of Police, Chief Brian Marshall, and also our current Lieutenant Brian McIntyre, who's here with us today, and then we will be promoting our newest lieutenant, which is Pat Mar. So and then we will also be welcoming today our newest Sergeant Nicholas Natali, and we have also with us a patrol officer that we are welcoming to Phoenixville, Officer David Dry. And with that, Chief, I turn it over to you.
We'll begin with Officer Dry. Dave Dry is a graduate of Southern Area High School and a proud veteran of the United States Navy, where he served for 70 years as a first-class fire controlman. He also specializes as a gun weapons system technician and operator. He was stationed abroad on the USS John McCain for five years, homeported in Yokosuka, Japan. I said it right. Yokosuka, Japan, after his military service. Dave continued to serve his community, spending 70 years as Assistant General Manager with the Wawa Corporation at multiple locations. Dave is also a proud father of two. He is a recent graduate of Montgomery County Police Academy, and he now joins Phoenixville Police Department, bringing with him a strong commitment to service, discipline, and dedication to the safety of our community.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I.
I.
State your name.
David Dry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Borough of Phoenixville.
And the Borough of Phoenixville.
I will.
I will.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office as an officer.
Of the office as an officer.
With the Borough of Phoenixville.
With the Borough of Phoenixville.
Police Department.
Police Department.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
Of a person's.
Of a person's.
Race.
Race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Officer Dry. You want to go say hello?
Next, I would ask that Corporal Nick Natali come forward, Mayor. Nick Natali graduated from the Pennsylvania State Police Municipal Police Office Academy's 55th Class in October of 1999. Immediately after graduating, he began work at SEPTA Transit Police in Philadelphia. He was assigned to SEPTA's Special Ops Response Team, SRT, where he was trained as anti-terrorism and also bomb technician. In 2008, he left SEPTA and began working for the Phoenixville Police as a police officer. In 2013, he transferred from patrol officer to detective in the Bureau of Criminal Investigation. In 2018, he was promoted to detective corporal and has continued to work in BCI, the Bureau of Criminal Investigations. Nick's also part of the Chester County ICAC Task Force. He's a hostage negotiator with the Chester County Emergency Response Team, and recently, he's a task force member with the FBI Child Crimes Unit.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I. Nicholas Natali.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Borough of Phoenixville.
Borough of Phoenixville.
I will.
I will.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
As a sergeant.
As a sergeant.
With the Borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
With the Borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
I will.
I will.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
Of a person's race.
Of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Sergeant Nick Natali.
And without further ado, Sergeant Patrick Mark was born and raised in Phoenixville and has proudly served the Phoenixville Police Department for the past 25 years. He began his career as a patrol officer before being promoted to corporal, and subsequently was assigned to the department's detective division. Patrick Mark went on to serve as patrol sergeant, later transitioning to detective sergeant, where he supervised investigations in the detective division. Sergeant Mark has been a dare officer for 20 years and was the director of the department's Citizen Police Academy. He served as a field training officer, TASER and Bataan instructor, as well as department's use-of-force instructor, and is currently serving on that committee. He's a graduate of Shippensburg University, the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association Leadership Program, and Mid-Atlantic Law Enforcement Executive Development Seminar. He's got a rather long bio here. Also, the New Jersey State Association of Police Command and Leadership Academy, and finally, the Northwestern University of School and Police Command Staff Class 573. Sergeant Mark is joined here tonight by his wife Katie, son Paul, daughter Dottie, and his parents Paulette and Robert. He now serves as administrative lieutenant for the department, overseeing administrative functions and supporting the overall mission of the agency. His career reflects a deep commitment to public service, professional excellence, and the community that he's part of his entire life.
I.
I.
State your name.
Patrick Mark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Borough of Phoenixville.
And the Borough of Phoenix.
I will.
I will.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
As a lieutenant.
As a lieutenant.
With the Borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
With the Borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
Of a person's.
Of a person's.
Race.
Race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Lieutenant Mark.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Great job, buddy. Gathered back together, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you so much to all the officers who are gathered here with us today. Certainly, too, we would like to make a special mention and congratulations to all of the family and friends of the officers, too. We know that it takes a lot of support from many different people to make it possible. So thank you. Thank you to all of our incredible officers, our first responders, and thank you all for being here with us tonight.
With that, we will just take a moment's break here to allow the officers to exit, take some photos, and reset the room slightly. So give us just a moment here as we reconfigure. Okay, we will now resume our normal agenda, moving on to section five, which is our consent agenda. Number of items in tonight's consent agenda. Is your microphone not working? There we go.
There we go.
Sorry.
Um, I just wanted to bounce something out of the consent agenda.
Absolutely. Which item?
Uh, it was C2.
Okay, we'll move C2 to the normal section of the agenda. With that, any other items in tonight's agenda with any questions, comments, or adjustments? Okay, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda for this evening.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero, with the one item being moved to the normal section of the agenda. With that, we move to section six of tonight's agenda, which is communications council participation. Any updates from council? Any communications from residents? Any updates? No, we have another section at the end of the report, so we'll circle back to that. I will also be reorganizing the agenda just a little bit, since the mayor has had to step out of the room. So we will receive the mayor's report when he returns. Tonight, under appointments, we don't we don't have any pending appointments on tonight's agenda outside of what was already discussed or covered in the consent agenda. However, we always ask residents who are interested in being appointed to any of the various boards, committees, or commissions, to please reach out to your councilperson or staff. It's an easy process. There are always openings on the horizon, and likely, there is a board or committee that matches your skill set and interests in the town. So we urge you to reach out, attend a meeting, take part as we need roughly 100 volunteers every year to take part in all of our various boards and committees. So moving on, that takes us to new business, section nine of tonight's agenda. The first item is a motion to reject all bids received for the finished water reservoir number one coping replacement project.
Still moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Any questions on this motion to reject all bids? As discussed in committee, seeing none, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. We will reject that bid set. Next up, under new business, we have a motion to approve addendum to agreement for hauling and disposal of wastewater sludge by and between Synagro Central LLC and the Borough of Phoenixville.
Still moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Any questions on this addendum to the agreement for Synagro? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Item C in new business tonight, we have a motion to approve an environmental site access agreement between the Borough of Phoenixville and Tol Mid-Atlantic LP.
I think this one would be good to have some background on before we vote. So as you know, Tol Mid-Atlantic is pursuing a land development on 100th Lane and 41 Second Avenue. As part of that development, some known environmental cleanup is expected to be needed as 41 Second Avenue was formerly the site of a metal baseball bat manufacturing facility. Tol is working with the Department of Environmental Protection to do testing in order to come up with a cleanup plan. And DEP has required Tol to do testing on the next door property, which happens to be our wastewater treatment plant property. As a result, the agreement before you this evening is to permit Tol enter the Borough property and conduct testing subject to a variety of conditions. Summary of the agreement is as follows. Tol may enter our wastewater treatment plant property to conduct testing on specifically identified locations. The testing is soil testing of a depth not more than six inches. And if any contamination is found, Tol will be required to do the cleanup of the contamination on the Borough property, regardless of whether it moves forward with their proposed development or not. Knowing that this is our wastewater treatment plant property with certain expected uses now and in the future, there are specific cleanup procedures that Tol must follow if any contamination is found. The agreement also contains various liability protections for the Borough.
With that background provided by the solicitor, still need a motion to begin discussion.
So I'll make a motion to approve the environmental site access agreement between the Borough of Phoenixville and Tol Mid-Atlantic LP.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions for the solicitor, question for the manager, any questions on this item? Particularly okay, seeing none, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed. Which carries. Item D, under new business, we have a motion to approve a settlement voluntary contribution agreement effective January 1st, 2023, buy-in between Phoenixville Hospital LLC and the Borough of Phoenixville.
Still moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Any questions on the voluntary contribution agreement?
I think this is another one that some background would be helpful on. So as you may know, the school district appealed the tax-exempt status of the Phoenixville Hospital property, which is owned by Tower Health. We joined in that litigation, and in June, the district agreed to settle that matter. Tower agreed to settle with the Borough on the same terms and conditions as it did with the district, which is that a portion of the property containing the office building will be taxable, which is about 23% of the property. A portion of the property containing the hospital will be exempt from real estate taxation, which is approximately 77%. The Borough will refund the money paid by Tower Health for the exempt portion of the property for 2023, 2024, and 2025. However, the hospital has agreed to provide a voluntary contribution to the Borough in the amount of $202,000, excuse me, $202,600, which can be deducted from that reimbursement, which is about 31% of the total amount. This, the term of this agreement runs through the end of the 2026 tax year, and I believe this is a strong settlement, and I recommend approval of this agreement.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion on hand? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed. Motion carries. And lastly, under new business, we have a motion to authorize the Borough to submit comments and/or motion to intervene to the New England Hydro Power Company LLC preliminary FERC application as determined by the, to be appropriate by the Borough Solicitor in order to represent the Borough's interests.
Still moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Mr. Jen Linger, would you like to give any background on this one?
Sure. So we received notice that the New England Hydro Power Company submitted a preliminary FERC application regarding the Black Rock Dam. This would be in order to install hydroelectric facilities on the dam. We are, as you may know, we receive water from behind the dam in our water treatment plant. So the levels of the water supplied by the dam are very important to us. We also want to make sure that the efforts that we've undertaken to support recreational opportunities on the river are adversely affected. So we would like to either submit comments or intervene in the application just to make sure our interests are protected, and our deadline for submission is October 3rd.
A motion to second. Any questions on the motion? Any questions on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed. Carries eight zero. That concludes our new business and moves us into public hearings, which will need a motion to recess.
I'll make a motion to recess the meeting and enter into a hearing on zoning ordinance amendment appealing and replacing Chapter 27 zoning attachment one districts, district specification and Borough zoning map.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor.
I.
Post. All right, we are now in a public hearing. So this ordinance amendment is the result of over two years of effort by the Borough, its consultants, a group of volunteers, and participating members of the public. I'm going to give some procedural background and then turn the presentation over to our Borough Planner, Judy Stern Goldstein. This ordinance was advertised in the Pottstown Mercury on July 28th, 2025, and August 4th, 2025. Copies of the proposed ordinance amendment were sent to the Chester County Law Library in the Pottstown Mercury on July 22nd, 2025 for public access. I'm going to introduce the following exhibits into the record of the hearing. Exhibit B1, a copy of the ordinance and exhibits. Exhibit B2, an action memorandum from the Borough Planning Commission dated June 11th, 2025, recommending that the Borough adopt the proposed ordinance. Exhibit B3, review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission dated July 15th, 2025, in support of the proposed ordinance. Exhibit B4, review letter from the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee dated July 30, 2025, finding the proposed ordinance to have three inconsistencies with the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan. Exhibit B5, response letter from Gilmore and Associates, the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee, dated August 12th, 2025, explaining how the ordinance is consistent with the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan. Exhibit B6, copy of the public notice for the consideration of the ordinance. Exhibit B7, proof of publication from the Pottstown Mercury for the two advertised dates. Exhibit B8, letters from the Pottstown, oh, excuse me, from the Borough to the Pottstown Mercury and Chester County Law Library dated July 21, 2025, providing copies of the ordinances. Exhibit B9, a full red line of the proposed ordinance changes as compared to the current zoning ordinance. Exhibit B10, a material red line of the proposed ordinance changes as compared to the current zoning ordinance. And exhibit B11, the PowerPoint slide deck prepared by the Borough Planner, who is here this evening to provide more information on this ordinance. And with that, I will turn the hearing over to Ms. Goldstein.
Thank you. With your permission, I'll run through the slides of the deck just so that everyone present and anyone watching on Zoom has an idea of what the ordinance is about, and it's fully explained. So with that, we'll go to the next slide. Project overview. The project is funded in part with a Chester County Vision Partnership Grant, a VPP. The project began in the summer of 2023, and the intent is to make the zoning ordinance generally consistent with the 2022 Comprehensive Plan adopted by Phoenixville Borough. So the first thing we did was look at the comprehensive plan of Phoenixville Borough and see whether or not the ordinance in effect and the ordinance proposed the ordinance in effect and the ordinance proposed are generally consistent. It's important to note that there are several recommendations in the comp plan that directly relate to zoning. Goal A point two point one of the comp plan is to provide human scaled outdoor rooms or spaces for pause and contemplation. Goal four point, uh C point four point two of the comp plan aims to encourage the use of transit by reducing parking requirements. Goals G point two point one, G point three point two, and G point three point four of the comp plan deal with affordable housing. It should be noted that all of these goals have been addressed in the draft zoning ordinance update you see before you this evening. Next, we looked at the county comprehensive plan, which is called Landscapes Three. And that comp plan is intended to guide the county's growth and preservation. That plan identifies Phoenixville Borough as a growth area, urban center. Growth areas as defined by Landscapes Three are areas that can best accommodate growth, are planned for a full range of infrastructure, and are highly suitable for redevelopment. Essentially, the borough and what the borough has been doing with adaptive reuse and redevelopment of underutilized parcels. Urban centers as defined by Landscapes Three are characterized by historic downtowns and established neighborhoods that serve as civic, economic, and population centers. Planning principles for the urban centers as per Landscapes Three include the following: substantial future growth, adaptive reuse of historic buildings, development compatibility with traditional building dimensions and massing, medium to high intensity mixed-use redevelopment and infill development, transit-oriented development, inclusive housing, meaning a range of types and income levels, and pedestrian-oriented uses in downtowns. All of which are addressed either in the existing ordinance or in the updated ordinance before you this evening. A task force was formed for this ordinance and for this project. Representatives included people from the Borough Planning Commission, Borough Council, Borough Zoning Hearing Board, and Borough Staff. There were approximately ten meetings with the task force, and all meetings were advertised and open to the public. In addition to the task force meetings, there was a public workshop held on February twenty-sixth at the Recreation Center. Approximately twenty residents, in addition to those members of the task force and existing boards and commissions and Borough Council and staff, attended. The first hour, the public attendees were given time to peruse the exhibit boards, which included the proposed ordinance text amendments and maps of the existing zoning districts and proposed revisions. So full, the whole thing was up on boards. There was a lot of discussion at Q and A. The second hour was a more formal, open public comment period where we listened, we heard things as a committee. We addressed things later. Based on that meeting and the input from the task force, a draft text amendment and zoning map were revised to address the residents' concerns. The text amendments, um I guess an overall of the text amendments, based on the findings of the audit, the analysis, discussions with the task force and the public workshop, include the following. An update of the purpose and objectives of the ordinance. Revised definition section to include new terms, removed unused terminology, i.e. words that were no longer used in the ordinance, and update and clarify some existing terms. Amended district regulations and specifications for clarity and consistency. Added use regulations for accessory dwellings, forestry, and mineral extraction. Deleted several design standards that were contradictory and or better suited for the subdivision land development ordinance regulations. Updated off-street parking requirements to establish provisions for off-site parking. Clarify the requirements for parking demand and impact studies. Require off-street parking for residential uses and accommodate electric vehicle parking. Also deleted resource protection standards, which are no longer applicable, and added provisions for reasonable accommodation. In addition to the text of the ordinance, there was a zoning map amendment. There were several amendments to the map that have been proposed. All the districts are still the same names. The nomenclature has not changed. No new districts have been proposed, but the boundaries had been revised, and those maps were in your packet and are on the screen now. And were advertised. So where we are now is we're in the adoption process. Last month, on July eighth, I was before you, gave a similar presentation, and at that point Borough Council made the motion or enacted the presentation to go before the, or I'm sorry, to be advertised, have the ordinance be advertised, and go through with the adoption process and started. On July tenth, two days later, the Phoenixville Borough Planning Commission met, and they recommended adoption. On July fifteenth, we received a review from the Chester County Planning Commission, which was a very nice review. They also recommended adoption. On July thirtieth, we received a review from the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee. Many parts of it they were happy with. They noted they were all generally consistent, with the exception of three items they had issue with. We responded to them, that letter that was mentioned by your solicitor earlier that went out today. And I have heard back from the planner for the Regional Planning Committee. And he has accepted our explanations, and with the two minor updates proposed to address the borough exemption, having the caveat at some future time when you want, if and when you want to adopt an amendment, that any, any borough exemption would also have to comply with the buffer requirements of your zoning ordinance. And with respect to Riparian Carter, make sure that the definition of Riparian Carter is cleaned up in the subdivision develop- subdivision land development ordinance, so there's no question. They were, that was it. He accepted the explanation on the trails because there is a regulation already in your SADO. So with that, we're here tonight having a hearing and awaiting your comments, questions, and action.
Uh Judy, I know we talked about the text amendment and the zoning map. I just wanted to quickly touch on the district specifications attachment one. Um am I correct that we tweak some of the provisions in there, but really significantly, some of the provisions of the district specs, we moved to the body of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, we did, so that they were not um sort of forgotten and not included in the body. Many of those specifications were included that in the body or the meat and potatoes of the ordinance. And the specification sheets are more the illustrative version of them as they were intended to be originally, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to council to ask questions of Judy in a second, but I just wanted to also note um that I also made as solicitor some legal revisions to the zoning ordinance. Uh and and these were generally to accomplish uh some of the things that Judy mentioned, like making sure that the terms used throughout the zoning ordinance matched our definitions, capitalizing defined terms, um making sure that definitions were clear and unused definitions were removed. Um but probably the most significant thing I did was to uh make sure that the procedural provisions match what we're doing in practice and the biggest change there is the uh preliminary opinion from the zoning officer, which is a process under nine sixteen point two of the municipality's planning code. Uh I just wanted to make our process clear in our ordinance um to match her practice and what the uh MPC requires. Um so with that, I would turn it over to council uh to ask any questions of Ms. Goldstein.
I have a question. Um the one thing I wasn't quite what was the major changes to the parking?
The major change really was to have a requirement for residential. Before everything was left up to uh started to be determined, so depending on the situation, you could build a couple new apartments and not have any new parking required. So there are specific parking requirements for residential now.
Judy, could you comment on stacked parking for multifamily?
Yes. The way the stacked parking works for multifamily being us two spaces, like one block and the other essentially, if they're assigned to the same unit, that's permitted. If they're not, it is not permitted. So essentially, you can park the way you would in your own driveway if it's your space, but not otherwise. You're welcome.
I had a question about, uh you said there was changes to the district's specific regulations. Could you just describe that? Did that change any of the setbacks for buildings or sheds or any of the, was there any like major changes there?
There were no significant changes to the area and dimensional requirements. There were some subtle changes to uses permitted, and I believe um NC, was that the, I'm drawing a blank. I want to page for my ordinance, but I'm not gonna do that to you tonight.
Yes, uh in particular, since we uh had some extension of the neighborhood commercial, uh there were some items permitted by right uh in neighborhood commercial that we determined were was probably not appropriate to be by right uh with the extensions. So some things were removed from NC entirely, and some were moved to special exception. One that was removed entirely was Tavern or Bar. Um another that was removed entirely was parking lot as a principal use. Um one that was moved from permitted by right to special exception was a restaurant use.
And and that was directly related to the comments we heard at the public meeting on February twenty-sixth.
Now, one more question. So I think a big change here too is that we spelled out accessory dwelling units as well, right?
Yes, correct.
Uh I was reading through, I, what are the setback requirements for a detached accessory dwelling? I don't see that anywhere.
They're, if it's a detached unit, it's the same as any other residential accessory structure.
Okay, alright.
So just like the sheds or any other outbuildings would be, it's the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right. Thank you, Ms. Goldstein.
Thank you.
Um I had a uh couple other notes that I wanted to uh state clearly. Uh we intentionally did not make any modifications to our, the signed provisions of our ordinance, uh nor the wireless communication facilities uh provisions. Um and I just want to be clear that the ordinance we're proposing this evening, uh you know, we discussed the three items. The ordinance we're proposing this evening adopts the changes to the z- the text of the zoning ordinance, the attachment one district specifications, and the zoning map changes. Um so with that, uh open it up to uh discussion and co- well, comments by uh council, uh and then I'll turn it over to comments from the public.
I'll just offer, uh colleagues that I was on the task force, went to a lot of the Wednesday night meetings, um a lot of great work, a lot of hard work. We had a very, I really appreciated the size of the task force, had like twenty people um on it. So it was diverse citizens and also uh contrib- contributors from uh some of the experts from across the county. So we worked through a lot of great things um and really dug into a lot of concepts. Um I I think the one thing that I'd, I'm appreciate, really appreciate is the accessory dwelling unit uh permission now, because um and and one of the prin- principal points about it is um if somebody wants to build an accessory dwelling unit for like family or um for whatever purpose, the pro- the primary owner of the property still needs to reside on the property. Now, if it's a senior um who's, they, and they want to move into a smaller in-law suite or something like that, um it's, it's not like these accessory dwelling units can suddenly start converting private, you know, we started getting flippers in here, you know, putting accessory dwelling units in the resident, there's no actual ru- resident owner. So that's one of the things I think that's really good, and it is gonna help with families to continue to stay in the borough and and ex- extend their ability to live here. So I think it really worked out well.
Thank you, Mr. Mar. Any other comments from council?
I too was able to sit in on a lot of the task force meetings. It was a really great experience for me. A lot of reoccurring themes that I've known my other colleagues on council to bring up as we've gone through different processes did come up. I really appreciated the consultation um from obviously those that we engage with on a consultative level, but then also our planning commission representatives and zoning, like really having those members have a seat at the table because they deal with so many of these things all the time. Um the multi-generational housing and looking at how we diversify, our housing was really great, as well as kind of cleaning up some of these other things that we've noticed. So I really appreciated all the hard work, and it was a really great learning opportunity for me as well.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. Any other comments from council? All right, seeing none, I will open it up to public comment. Um if you, any members of the public here in person would like to make public comment uh on this zoning ordinance amendment, uh please approach the uh podium and state your name and address and make your public comment.
Hi. Good evening. David Sanic, Fillmore Street. Wasn't really prepared to speak tonight, but I gonna ask, and I know this is probably a done deal, but my question, and I posed this at the public hearing at the uh Recreation Center, and I didn't think I really got a satisfactory answer. It has to do with the mug, M U G, well, it's not called S M G, I think. And uh has to do, it said if you own or someone has five acres or more, you have to give twenty percent of your property to the borough, unless I misunderstood it, that's the way I read it. And to me, it almost seemed like, okay, how do you do that? Is what the borough gets, is that in line with what you're doing as development, or is it just a taking? I mean, that's written into the ordinance. And I did have some concerns about that. I I spoke with Ms. uh Goldstein. I think she told me something I don't remember, but it, it didn't really register one way or the other. And I, I, I don't frankly think that's right. And uh so I'm voicing that objection. And uh would ask you to take some consideration on that. I I realize it's pretty late in the game, but uh life is busy and you have a lot of things going on. So that is a concern to me as to how that plays out.
Dr. Sanic, could you provide a citation to the section you're referring to?
I can't. I can't do it. Right, it's in, it's in the MG ordinance. It has to do with the land use development. I I didn't come prepared for that, so I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I did, but it's, it's in there. And and you have, is twenty percent, and I'm saying that's a chunk. And uh without some kind of cause as to why you would do that.
I I, I don't recollect that provision, but if you're able to provide a citation, I'd be happy to look into it.
Well, it it would, it's gonna pass tonight anyway, isn't it? Or what? You want me to bring, look, try to look it up on my cellphone now?
I I cannot suppose what the Borough Council will do, but I I do not recollect the provision that you're discussing.
Maybe Ms. Goldstein can recollect it. It was not in existing, it was in the new ordinance. It was in the new proposal. So I'm not sure whether that would come under subdivision and land development or just general rules and regulations or what. Uh me and computers.
I'm trying to look at it quickly, and I don't see anything about a requirement to dedicate land to the borough in the zoning ordinance.
No, it wasn't. That was the one thing, kind of, it wasn't for public space. It said for, I said, what I got from that meeting was it was for something the borough would do. And I'm saying, well, I guess that could work. I mean, if you in the borough were in agreement with what you were doing, but it wouldn't work if they say, well, we're taking our 20% and we're going to do something that conflicts with you, but so what? And because that's the law. And I guess, you know, it didn't make sense to me then. I guess I should have researched this more. I didn't realize this was coming up tonight.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Sanic.
Alright.
Any other public comment for people here in person?
My name is Lucia Meece. I'm inquiring about the, I think they call it the ADA.
Meece, please state your address for the record.
Oh, 610 Mellon Street, Phoenixville, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Okay. Does it have to be detached or can it be attached, the original house? If you're adding like an in-law quarter or something?
It can be either.
It can be added? It can be either way? And it has been passed?
It's what we're discussing this evening, and council, I expect, will vote on it after this hearing.
Okay.
Judy, can I, yeah, can we have you hop on the microphone?
So there are three options for the accessory dwelling unit, ADU. It can be internal, so carved out inside the house. It could be in addition to the existing house, or it could be a detached structure.
Okay.
So there's three options.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment from people here in person? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the Zoom platform?
Mr. Denlinger, there's no hands raised.
Alright, with that, we will close the public comment period. And I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and return to our public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, we are now back in our public meeting, and I would entertain a motion on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment.
I will make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment repealing and replacing Chapter 27 zoning, Attachment 1 District specification, and borough zoning map.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just one last comment. Thank you to everybody involved. It was a team of 25 or 30 folks. It was two and a half years. It was three different agencies, four different agencies, all of our consultants. I got to partake in most of the meetings, but I got to just sit back and listen as a lot of really creative, really just strong minds sat around debating every aspect of our zoning code. And so I really appreciate everybody's time, effort, and expertise that went into this revision.
And I just add, in particular, I'd like to pay tribute to our zoning officer, Dave Volker, who really knows this stuff and really was helped engage the discussions many times about, helped us think about things in a way that I wouldn't have been able to without somebody with that kind of expertise, particularly for this borough.
We certainly have a lot of talented staff and people involved. I also wanted to say, I know that there was some public comment with some questions. If the public is viewing this or has questions, please reach out to one of us. And if we can't specifically answer it, we will consult the experts that can and get you clarity on what you need. The more information you can provide about what you're referring to is really helpful, but certainly we don't want anybody to be confused. So even though we might be moving forward with this, we can certainly answer any questions.
Just for reference, it's this thick, which is why I don't have everything memorized. So with that, all those in favor? Opposed? Alright, ordinance passes.
Back to me.
Mr. President.
With that, we'll move on to Section 11 of tonight's agenda, which is resolutions and ordinances. We have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing an emergency stream bank repair on the French Creek.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss.
Probably another one that some background is worthwhile. As you may know, the borough has been aware of some stream bank erosion along French Creek, which is a specific portion along borough and property in the vicinity of Tiglumber. A few large storms have caused significant incremental erosion, and the borough had previously authorized RVE to come up with a plan to remediate this issue. At a recent evaluation site visit by RVE, RVE identified a significant additional erosion of the stream bank and the significant leaning of PICO overhead electrical poles and wires towards the stream. In the opinion of RVE, one other significant storm could cause further erosion that could result in the collapse of the electrical poles and wires into the stream. So per state law, the situation was declared an emergency situation, and steps to remediate the issue were commenced immediately. When such an emergency is declared, a resolution ratifying the emergency is required, and that is what is before you this evening.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions on the motion at hand?
Yes, just, has the work been done? Or it's?
No.
Not yet, but the emergency declaration allowed us to start getting someone lined up to do the work.
Okay.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. With that, we'll move into reports committees, boards, and commissions. First up, Ms. Dugan with a HARB, including item C2 from tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for renovations at 308 Bridge Street.
Second. Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirchner. Any questions about the item 308 Bridge Street?
Well, I'll just give you a little bit of background. They're just replacing a bay window in front. And the only reason it didn't hit the consent agenda is one of the members was hoping that they could keep or hold on to a little bit more of the original window, but it's just not going to happen. So that's why we're here. And there is, is he still here? In case you, in case they, if anybody has any questions, they could explain it a little bit further for you.
Any questions on item A1 here for 308 Bridge? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight oh. And then next up, we have C2 out of consent agenda. Ms. Dugan? Or was that? Sorry, that's personnel. Never mind. I'm sorry. But then the wrong spot. Anything else out of HARB?
No, that's all.
Thanks. Mr. Moore with Planning Commission.
We just, previous planning commission meeting, we just reviewed and discussed zoning orders we just adopted. And we were presented with a zoning, zoning hearing board application just for standard. Does get routed past us. Is your solicitor, can you just explain that?
Yes, so the way the meetings fell last month, Borough Council was informed and decided to take no action on the zoning hearing board application before it went to Planning Commission. But Planning Commission also reviewed that application and decided to take no action.
So no, no action for the council, and our next meeting will be this Thursday at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Kirchner with Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things going on. One, in West Pike Lynn, the supervisors are looking at disbanding their police force, which is, I don't know if you've been out in the Chester Springs area, but there are signs, keep West Pike Lynn's police force. So that's something that they brought to the regional planning committee, and we'll see where that goes. Apparently, keeping the police force is going to, according to some people, take a substantial tax increase, which is why they're, they have it up in the air. The other thing is, in East Pike Lynn, they are going to install sidewalks along 724 from Township Line Road to Crossover Boulevard, from what I'm told. So, and the other thing is, in September, we are going to have an in-person meeting, which is a rarity. We have two of them a year. And this one, the Phoenixville Soccer Club, will be in attendance to talk about their efforts to find new playing fields, which apparently they're, well, they, they need, they want to talk to all six municipalities about getting their help with that. So that's what's happening there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Kirchner. Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
Well, it's that time of year where everything's starting to clean up for summer, but we've got the fall stuff coming, so lots of things going on. So hold on tight. First of all, we've got the Fall Fest and Trunk or Treat coming up this October 25th from 12 to 3. I hope to see everybody there. It's a great, great festival. We do this every year. It's awesome. We've got Puppy Yoga on Monday, August 20th at 6 o'clock. Healthy Seniors, What Is Advanced Care Planning? And that is on Tuesday, August 28th at 2 o'clock. And then the Red Cross, American Red Cross Blood Drive on Wednesday, August 27th from 1 to 6. And then we've got lots of camps coming up for the end of August. We've got Young Rembrandts, Science Explorers, Mountain Bike Camps with Soul Riders, Skyhawk Sports Beginner Golf Camp, Jump Start Sports Camp, the Soul and Sky Yoga Camp Weeks, they've just got individual weeks for each one, Junior Pickleball Camps, and then we've got lots of youth programs. You've got Hiking Hound Adventures, which has got children's hikes for ages three to eight that have ice cream adventure hikes that you hike, learn and hike and learn about what's going on and then learn how to make ice cream. Jump Start Fall T-Ball, the Youth Basketball Training Academy. Then we've got the Fall 2025 Coed NFL Flag Football League, Art Classes with Young Rembrandts, Fun with Skyhawks, Beginner Skateboarding Clinic, Soccer Shots, the Fall Program, Fundamentals Tennis. And then we've got adult programs, the Fall Women's Power Volleyball, the Fall Coed Softball League, the Fall Men's Softball League, Shuffleboard, Strength and Stability Training. And then there's Fall Watercolor, the Pickleball Clinic with Universal Rackets, Pickleball Clinic and Drill Session with Smashville. And actually, that's all. That's all I have. So I hope everybody checks out all of the programs that we're offering on the website and find something good to entertain your family coming up this fall.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Move on to Tree Advisory Committee with Mr. Carmonito.
Yes, Mr. President. Tree Advisory Committee met, the commission met this month. We're working through our removal list and planning sites for our fall planting. We have a pretty robust list of sites to plant. And if you know of any sites where you would like to see new trees, please reach out to us and let us know. Next meeting is September 3rd, 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Human Relations Commission, Ms. Berkeley.
We met last Wednesday. We meet the first Wednesday of every month at the REC Center, 6:00 PM. We still continue to engage with the state HRC and at a county level, and encourage anyone interested in being a part of the Chester County Advisory Board to reach out to other, myself, or the HRC.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to council action referred to from committees. And we start with Personnel, Public Safety Committee with Ms. Berkeley. As well as the item that I misidentified that is coming out of consent.
Yeah, so I would like to make a motion to appoint Brendan Wertz to the HARB for a term expiring August 31st, 2029.
Second. A motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on motion, Ms. Dugan?
I do. I'm just bringing it to everyone's attention that I, I mean, I have no, I mean, no disrespect to the person that we are going to appoint here, I'm sure, but I'm just wondering, or no, I'm just commenting that we are, we tend to move away from people that have experience. And the person that was doing this for a while had actually been a council person for several years up until about 18, I think, and has been on HARB since before that, and then came back and also was part of that. And I think HARB is one of those places where it's nice to have experience and people that know what they're talking about. And it's not like something you can't learn, but it does, there is a lot of history and experience that helps with that committee. So that's my objection.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, six one with Mr. Kirchner out of the room. Anything else out of Personnel, Public Safety tonight?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
With that, we'll move on to Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Moore.
All topics were dealt with by the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carmonito with policy on a number of items.
Yes, Mr. President. First item, I would like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance changing the name and location of a borough street.
Second. Motion by Mr. Carmonito, second by Mr. Weiss. Any questions on the renaming item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero with Mr. Kirchner out of the room.
Next item, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amendment to Chapter 15 Motor Vehicles.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmonito, second by Ms. Berkeley for the advertisement in Chapter 15 Motor Vehicles. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I would also like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance establishing the borough a Phoenixville Firefighters Pension Plan.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmonito, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion to establish a firefighters' pension plan? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero with Mr. Kirchner back in the room.
And final motion, I would like to schedule, I'd like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amendment repealing and replacing Chapter 1 Administrative Administration and Government, Part 7, Pensions, Retirement, and Social Security.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmonito, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Anything else out of policy tonight?
That's it. Next meeting is August 26th, immediately filing finance, and we have some good things to discuss.
Fantastic. We'll move on to infrastructure, technology, transportation, and sustainability with Mr. Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So as always, lots going on in the ITTS Committee. We love visitors, so please come and visit us. Our next meeting is on the 19th at 7:00 PM, so one week from today. And just one piece of news to celebrate that has hit the airwaves since our last meeting. The borough was fortunate enough to receive a $550,000 grant from, through the Community Revitalization Grant Program, the Chester County Department of Community Development, to help fund a 376 kilowatt solar array on our REC Center. Just another piece of evidence towards our continued pursuit of carbon neutrality and sustainability. So really excited about that and really honored to be granted that grant, and we'll do well with it. With that said, no other action or report out of ITTS, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. And lastly, we'll go back to Ms. Dugan for Finance Committee.
Everything was already handled in the consent agenda.
Thank you kindly. That closes out our reports from committees or council action referred to from. Since the mayor was out of the room, we will bump back to the mayor's report now. Put it on the spot.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for helping us today to celebrate all of our new officers and promotions. I do not have much to report this month. It is certainly the summer, and so we are grateful for all of the great events that we have going on in the community. Thank you, of course, to our borough staff and all the incredible organizations in our community that put on all these programs that bring us together. Also, we want to thank and we want to encourage all of the students who will be returning to school in the next couple of weeks, and we wish them a very safe and happy start to the new school year. So with that, Mr. President, back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. This will open up our second and final round of public comments. Any members of the public here in council chambers wishing to make comment to council tonight, please make your way to the podium. We do ask that you sign in on the paper sheet that's available on the podium. We do ask that you sign in on the paper sheet that's available on the podium and state your name and whether you're a borough resident or business owner. And then we will move to the Zoom platform. So any members who are joining us via Zoom, please raise your hand digitally. We will have staff unmute your microphone, announce your name, and you will then be able to make comment to council and public, so. It is, so public comment up at the podium, if you'd like to make comment. We just asked you to sign in on a little paper sheet there for the, for the purpose of the minutes. We like to get everybody's name spelled right.
I'm not too good at talking in front of people, but I'll, I'll do my best heartfelt way. I'd like to first read a small portion from the book that I've been start, I started reading, Life is Messy, from a New York Times bestselling author, Matthew Kelly.
Can you just state your name and?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Introduce yourself.
Alice Saragian, 68 Pennsylvania Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to read a few things from his book. Okay, morality is almost never mentioned. I cannot recall the last time I heard the mainstream media describe something as immoral. Every type of perversion and depravity has become someone's personal preference and right. Every age has new storytellers, but one truth endures. We become the stories we read, hear and watch. Today's storytellers appear to be committed to the normalization of evil and by extension, the annihilation of human dignity, not the dignity of someone anonymous people, but the annihilation of your dignity, my dignity, the dignity of our spouses, children, grandchildren, friends, colleagues and neighbors. This is this gentleman talking, okay? New York Times bestselling author, Matthew Kelly. Okay, now that leads me to another subject. I would just like to know, why is a homosexual flag flying at the municipal building? Is it the preference of state and local officials? If, if any officials were Nazi sympathizers, would we have a swastika flying out there? If they were KKK sympathizers, would we display those various symbols out there? If, if any official supports communism or socialism, would we fly a hammer and sickle out there? So what does this flag honor that's out there now? Does it honor George Washington and the soldiers at Valley Forge who froze and starved for America's freedom? Does it honor the founders who honored God or designers of the Declaration of Independence? Does it honor those who fought in the revolution, the Civil War, the Alamo, the World War II, World War I, II and Korean War, Vietnam? Does it even honor the memory of Martin Luther King or JFK? And on and on, okay? Please, I'm asking you to remove the homosexual flag from the municipal building and replace it with an honorable flag. KIA, MIA, POW, Christian flag, Pennsylvania State Code of Arms flag, the American peacetime flag. Now that's a flag that you should research. By, by choosing this, you know, there's so much to choose from. By doing so, you will teach future generations about American history, duty, honor, courage, commitment, integrity, country and service. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other members joining us via Zoom or in the public tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll close this final, second and final round of public comment. We also have a round of communications, council participation for any items that any members of council may have forgot earlier in the night or wanted to bring up at this time. Ms. Kirkner?
May I, may I just bring up one thing on the upcoming committee meeting schedule on the?
Yes, sir.
It says the Finance Committee is at 6:00 PM. I thought we had discussed that at 5:30.
Yeah, we moved that to 5:30 for starting in August. Okay. Okay.
Have it on the agenda, didn't put it on here, my bad.
Okay.
So it's advertised correctly, but not?
Just wanted to be sure.
It's good.
Just didn't want to share, show up a half hour late.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nobody comes to it anyway.
And this is the start of budget season, so those meetings do have lots of heady topics. So we appreciate the calling out to that specifically. Any other council participation tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to staff reports, which are in our council packets. Every month, we do just like to call out all of our employee service anniversaries. For the month of August, we are celebrating 79 years of public service, which has been focused with Matthew Mullen, who is our wastewater treatment superintendent. He's been with us for 27 years. Nathan Griffin on our sanitation team, he's been with us for 18 years. Officer Matthew Fusco has been with our police department for 17 years. Sergeant Kyle Place has been within the police department for 12 years. Officer Quinn Gauger is in our police department three years now. And lastly, Sam Alpern has been in the Parks and Rec Program Coordinator position for two years. We do appreciate all the time, commitment and talent that each member of our staff puts into making Phoenixville the best place to live and work. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor? Have a great night. We'll see you at the September meeting.